Able to chime in, free to at this point.
Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Stegman from M O G R. I just got a text from Brent. He's having some technical problems. He can see everybody, but he can't hear. So would it be possible to go through the other agencies and come back to planning?
Sure, that is not a problem. Appreciate the heads up regarding that. Okay, so let's move on. Is there any other comments to see? All right, Brent, are you going to hear us now? Are you able to?
Hello?
Hello, Brent?
It's Matt. Are you dialed into the hearing from a phone or from a laptop?
Laptop.
Oh, we can hear you now, Brent.
You can see everybody, but you cannot hear them?
Correct.
Okay.
He's not asking for me now, is he?
Yeah, but I let him know that you were just going to do this heads up and asked to come back around to you.
We can hold our fort.
The first was obvious, but do you have your sound on? Double check.
Yeah, I've been using my speakers all day.
Okay.
And while we're waiting for that, I just want to recognize that Councilwoman Shannon Snead has joined us. Also Rebecca Simmons, our General Counsel, and also I see B D C represented as well. Louise, thanks for joining us too.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, I see the three dots, okay. Wait a minute, that's just, that's just for the Q and A. That's not, I don't know why I don't have the settings thing on here. I don't see that.
Well, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and mute Brent.
Moon panel view. Jeez. He's still there, Matt?
Yeah, I'm still here.
I don't know. More options, connect with videos, switch audio, copy event links.
Yeah, go to switch audio and see if.
Okay, also, are there any comments from Housing Community Development since we do have you on the line?
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill report in support of this legislation.
Thank you very much for your support and keeping it concise as well. All right. Any other agencies that want to chime in at this point?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is Marsha Collins representing the Department of Public Works. Here in support of this bill, we did hear the presentation at the Planning Commission, and we support this legislation with the amendments that the Planning Commission has made.
Thank you very much. Any other agency comments at this point? Okay, well, hopefully we will hear from Planning. I do see that we have Councilman Risinger as well, and this falls within his council district. Councilman Risinger, do you have any points you'd like to make at this point?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and also thank you for indulging me on this bill and also to the committee members at that area. I support the amendment to Exhibit One in order to keep the properties in that area, Exhibit One going from an IMU one to an IMU two. I have talked to one of the owners of the property. I have also talked to the President, the Carol Camden Industrial Group. They support the amendment. The one thing negative about this bill is changing the zoning from an IMU one to an IMU two. With an IMU two, gas stations would be permitted. And right now, that area, I could tell you that is like four or five gas stations within two blocks. So if they change the zoning to an IMU two, that gives permitted use for more gas stations, which we do not need. So, Mr. Chair and to my committee members, I do, I support the amendment to Exhibit One. Thank you. If there's any questions, good.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilor Risinger. Appreciate your perspective and additional comments. We also see that we're joined by Law Department as well. I don't know if Law has any comments or do other agencies have comments at this point?
No, we stand by our report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any questions from any other members of the committee? And I do believe that we've all seen the proposed amendments as well. I'll give you one second.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Stegman again. Just wanted to let you know, I was just on the phone with Brent Flickinger, and I believe he's going to try to call in. Again, I apologize for the technical problems, but we're trying to get this sorted out.
Thank you very much.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, sounds like he's here.
Yeah. I apologize.
So Brent, please go ahead.
So you'd like me to make a brief presentation? Sorry, I didn't hear the other comments.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, so this bill, this is the Carol Camden bill. It's basically what we're trying to do to keep this, why we have this bill is we want to protect the light industry in the area. So we do that by prohibiting the heaviest industries like chemical manufacturing that might belong in Hawkins Point and to try to stop encroachment of uses that are incompatible with an industrial park. So there's three geographic areas. There's the area east of Russell where the casino is and Warner Street, which is now downtown zoning. So that is going to be taken out of the boundaries. The area between Russell Street and Ridgely, which is one block to the west, is the gateway to downtown. But anything west of Ridgely, which is zoned industrial, that's sort of the line that we want to draw to make sure we don't have a lot of encroachment when we have these industrial buildings and uses in the industrial park. So another reason for keeping the bill is there are three disposition lots that the city owns that are very important, and we want to be sure to make it easy to dispose of those lots in the future. So there are some prohibited uses in the plan. And I know that the business group has also recommended prohibiting many warehouses, which the city would certainly support that. As far as the amendments that's coming up on the IMU properties, do you want to address that now or do you want to wait until the amendment is put in there? I mean, I can explain why it's recommended. I can't hear you.
Sure, go ahead, I was on mute. Yes, please, go ahead. The overview of the amendment, potential amendment will be fine, and then we'll talk about the amendments when it comes time. But yes, please, go ahead. And also to recognize, Councilman Dorsey also joined as member of the committee. Thanks for joining us, now you have a busy schedule too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So as you know, committee members, when we update our renewal plan, we always update the zoning exhibit to reflect the current zone, which we've done in this case. The only recommendations around zoning is to recommend that seven properties that are now zoned IMU one would be rezoned in the future to IMU two. This is not a rezoning bill, but it would set the stage for that. And the reason for that is in 2016, there was no IMU two. And there was, the IMU one allows residential and residentially related uses. And the council, I believe, created IMU two for a situation where residential would not be appropriate. And we believe that that's the case for many of these properties that are in the middle of the industrial area. They're not next to residential. And so that there's now an option for an IMU two. The IMU one allows some uses that are not in the IMU two, such as, but these are healthcare facilities, healthcare clinics, hotels, motels, outdoor recreation. So we believe that those are not appropriate uses in industrial park, and they're not, they wouldn't be permitted in the IMU two. Some of the uses that would be permitted, which are not in IMU one, would be truck repair, contractor's storage yard, recycling collection. And retail would only be accessory to an industrial use. It wouldn't be a standalone retail. You know, some other things are just easier to get if you're in IMU two. So that's the basic rationale for these recommended changes from IMU one to IMU two. This isn't the major purpose of this bill, but it is something that the city is recommending to help preserve the industrial uses and stop the encroachment of things that might be conflicting. As I'm sure you all know, you've probably gotten complaints when the residence next to heavy industry, the residents complain about the noise in the trucks, and then the industry is constrained by what they want to do. That's why from Ridgely Avenue west to Monroe Street, the zoning would be industrial and should not allow for residential uses. We now have that option to IMU two.
Well, thank you, Brent, for walking us through that. Are there any questions from members of the committee? Looks like I don't see any at this point. Is there anything else you'd like to add from Planning? Or are there any other agencies who'd like to chime in at this point? And also, I recognize we're joined by Councilman Bill Henry, member of the committee. Thanks for joining us as well. Any additional comments from Planning or any other agencies?
The only thing I would add, which is not, again, a major thing, you know, along Russell Street, we're recommending prohibiting mini storage already. And also, no more gas stations or car washes. I mean, this is a gateway from the south to the city.
Understood. And one thing I think is appreciated, that seems that both you and Councilman Risinger are also on the same page as it relates to the health and viability of that corridor. So thank you for sharing that. At this point, again, I will open up for any more questions, and if not, then we can take a look at those proposed amendments. Okay, so not seeing any, let's take a look at the amendments. We should all have in front of us. So the first one is Amendment Number One after Page fourteen. And Exhibit One, land use and zoning dated November fourteen, twenty nineteen. Delete areas as depicted on the revised Exhibit One and renumber areas accordingly. Doesn't seem like there is much conversation around this point. If there isn't, entertain a motion to adopt the amendment. Oh, sorry. Actually, before we go into the amendments, I know there may be some people who have called in. So I want to open up any public testimony before we get to the amendments.
We have Andy Hotchkiss from Hammer Jacks. Andy Hotchkiss.
What's that?
Should I come back?
That does not make sense. Forget it.
Okay. Okay, call. Call. Andy Hotchkiss. He says he's on. That's not. All right. Okay. Only music.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on for a second.
I'm having.
Yeah, go.
Can you mute the public testimony for a moment?
I'm sorry, I can't. Go ahead, I see Councilwoman Mary Pegg. Councilman Henry, you were saying something?
Please mute. It's a public testimony that we can talk. Help, help.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm here for.
Okay.
I told you later. Something's wrong with the sound.
Okay. Okay. Can folks hear me?
Mr. Hotchkiss is not muted. Ever if folks think the call.
Yeah, so if Hotchkiss can sign out and then come back in, maybe that'll work. Can we try that? Can you close out Hotchkiss and see?
Hi, I just, can everybody hear me?
Can hear you now, yes.
Okay, sorry, I don't know what was going on by computer. It kept technical difficulties, I guess. Yeah, so we, you know, again, I'm also the President of the Carol Camden Business Association. We have sent a letter of support of the bill. And we sent a letter, I guess, late last week to Councilman Bullock and, you know, support the bill moving forward. And I'm sorry, for the last three minutes, I couldn't hear anything or see what was happening. So I kept on frantically trying to call in. And I want to thank everybody for taking the time and all the council people and such.
Thank you very much. Definitely appreciate you joining us, especially given your representation and as far as some of the business in the area. So thank you for joining us. All right, if there's any more testimony, we'll see if anybody else is here to testify. Bear with us a minute as we try to see if there's anyone else here to testify. All right, so we're going to get some more technical assistance. But again, let's look at, let's take a look at the amendments that are, as we talked about Amendment one. Are there any questions around the First Amendment? If not, we are going to then move on. Hold on for a second. All right, so while we are still moving on, a couple of things just for everybody's points. Again, we have received, as Mr. Hotchkiss said, a letter from the Carol Camden Business Association, and again, talking about the modifications for the existing renewal plan. Again, we talked about the amendment to Exhibit One. And again, Brent Flickinger from Planning also talked about the change from IMU one to IMU two. Again, recognizing that IMU two didn't exist previously, and so this has something to do with why we're taking this route at this point. Then also, let me take a look at any other documents that we have received. See. And as was also mentioned before, we did receive a letter from, we received a recommendation from the Planning Commission as well, supporting this change. Any additional comments or questions from members of the committee? All right, no question from members of the committee. We'll then go to any public testimony.
Calling user seventeen, you're on. Let's hang up. Let's try, calling user number six. Okay. Killer screen. From green.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Jeff Ratnall. Jeff Ratnall. You're on, Mr. Ratnall. Unmute yourself and speak.
I'm here representing Park West Health Center for a bill that, I don't think this is the bill, so I'm here for the next bill. I apologize if I'm in the wrong place at the wrong time.
No, you're fine, but it's for the next bill, for a later one. But thank you, Jeff, for joining us.
Okay, that's it, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I know there are a lot of folks who are geared up for some of the following pieces that we're going to talk about today. So with that being said, I will take a motion to move the amendment.
Move the amendment favorable.
Okay, the planning amendments and the Woodman amendments?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you want a voice or a vote or a vote?
First, those moved by Dorsey is their second. All right, look, second from Henry.
Okay, funny events. Welcome, Chair Bullock.
Yes.
Chair Bullock's on. Vice Chair Schreifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schreifer outside. Mr. Burnett.
Aye, yes.
To remember, it's aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry. You're muted, Mr. Henry. Number Snead.
Yes.
Okay, amendments are approved, amendments are approved, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to move the bill as amended?
Why don't you roll it as amended?
Just a second.
Can you really not hear me?
Yeah, you said.
Move ten now.
He's definitely asked if we could hear him.
Yes. Second by Dorsey, second by Henry.
Okay. Okay, first the roll call. Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
Chairman Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snee.
Yes.
Member Snee votes aye. Mr. Chairman, seven votes and affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second reader at the next meeting.
Right, thank you very much. The next bill in front of us is City Council Bill two zero zero five five three ordinance urban renewal, Boston Village Amendment. Again, this is also in the tenth council district. I know that Councilman Rosinger had joined us in the past. I'm looking at the agency reports. Again, they all look like they're favorable from this point, from planning, we see BDC, HCD, Public Works, Trans Station, Law and Chap. Are there any comments from any city agencies regarding their testimony or any points at this time? Looks like everyone stands by the reports. Are there any changes at this point?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, from DPW.
DHCD stands by our report.
BDC also stands by our report.
And Law stands by its report.
DOT stands by its report.
All right, perfect. You guys are making it pretty, pretty easy at this point. Are there any questions from members of the committee? All right, not seeing any. I don't know, is there any public testimony at this point? For this bill?
Hello, everyone. Anybody has one to testify?
Okay, so not seeing any additional commentary at this point. I will entertain a motion. So just before we move into the technical amendment to add the chronological number to the bill? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move the amendment.
Moved by Dorsey. It's our second.
Second, second.
Is that Burnett? Or Cohen, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In the interest of expediency, is it possible we could take a voice vote on the amendments instead of a law?
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. All right. Is there a motion to move the bill as amended?
No favorable as amended.
Moved by Dorsey. It's a second by Cohen. Ready for roll call?
Chair Bullock.
Yes.
It looks like Mr. is muted.
Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Aye, yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snee.
Yes.
Member Snee votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven votes and affirmative, no negative. We can move the second reader in the December meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, moving right along. The next bill in front of us is City Council Bill two zero zero five six five ordinance urban renewal, Park Heights Amendment. Looks like Planning has favorable amend. Are there any agencies that want to talk about, I see, Planning, did you have any comments at this point?
For hearing us, this bill was presented to the Planning Commission in their meeting of August twentieth, along with its companion bill twenty dash zero five six six, which proposed some of these earnings for properties in the area. Looking at my notes before I got into this meeting, our amendment proposed for this bill is to replace exhibits four A through four F, which are the zoning maps in the urban renewal plan. And I realized in looking at that, that when they were created by our GIS team, it still shows the R six zoning. And so what I would recommend the committee consider is that that map, if they're adopted, is then subsequently revised according to the rezoning bill five six six so that they line up. And then I also noticed that the other effect that this bill has is that it changes the land use map one B for the subject properties to go from residential to the office residential use district, which is fine, except that we recommended two properties, which is lots thirty eight and thirty nine, be removed from the rezoning bill. So that would then also have a matching amendment required for Sheet one B, which we have not yet prepared, but will be happy to do so as soon as possible. So with those two further changes, the Planning Commission favorably recommend the bill.
Thank you, thank you for the information. Questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Is it possible we can take those amendments orally from the Planning Commission from Eric today? For the undrafted, the yet undrafted amendments?
We sent, we sent this text by tomorrow.
Right, I don't know if you heard that, but if we get the text by tomorrow?
Yes, sir, we'll do that right after the hearing.
Okay, sure. So thank you for that suggestion, Councilman Dorsey.
Great, and then I just wanted to just comment that, that I was on the land use hearing and I know exactly what those changes were regarding those center properties in the block. Thank you.
No, thank you for helping expedite the process and being at the table. Are there any other questions from members of the committee or comments at this point? Okay, it doesn't look like there was any additional public testimony.
Okay, I don't want to have those, is the attorney for the petition, she's on the panel, you can imagine, see if she wants to speak.
Okay, well, open if there's, if you'd like to testify, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg, Martin Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. I'll be very brief. I just, I want to confirm that we do, we do support the amendments that are proposed by the Planning Department. Mr. Tisa had spoken with me about them before. And we submitted a revised plat to the committee for the rezoning bill. You should have that properly in your file. And you also should have a series of ten letters in support of this project from various community associations and other groups located in the area. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant.
Well, thank, thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Hecker? All right, any additional testimony? Comments, questions? If not, we'll also entertain a motion for the, well, first to move the amendment.
Okay, all the planning amendments plus we need a chronological.
Okay, so that's, so that's all the planning amendments plus the chronological number for the technical amendment. Are there, is there a motion to move?
Move the amendments, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Dorsey. Is there a second?
Second, Burnett.
Second by Burnett, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. Okay, the amendments are moved. All right. Is there, is there a motion to move the bill as amended?
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All right, moved by Dorsey. It's our second.
Cohen.
Second by Cohen, thank you. All right, roll call.
Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
Chairman Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snee.
Yes.
Member Snee votes aye. Mr. Chair, unanimous, seven to nothing. We can go to second reader the next meeting.
All right, thank you all very much. Moving right along, the next bill is City Council Bill two zero zero four four seven ordinance urban renewal, Hampden Business Area Amendment. We're going to move forward with that. I did see that we had Councilman Clark, who was with us previously, I think she might have dropped off. Oh, there she is. Councilman Clark, do you have anything to add on this one? I think you're muted.
I, I'm in support. It's, it's simply updating the language to go with transform language and also to, to set a expiration date, which gives the community the chance to let it terminate or, or come back and continue it at that time. And the continuation date, and this is co-sponsored by myself and Councilman Leon Pinkett, the new expiration date would be December thirty first, twenty twenty nine. So that gives everybody a lot of time to decide whether they want to go forward with it. It's really just to change the date and to update the language, coordinate with the new zoning code language.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Clark. Are there any questions from members of the committee or comments at this point? All right, well, then, looking at the agency reports, you see Law, Planning, HCD, BDC, Trans Station, couple of, all purported either favorable or no objection. Are there any changes from any of the agencies regarding testimony?
Mr. Chairman, this is Marsha Collins from DPW. I don't have any changes to our report, but, excuse me, but you did announce the bill is twenty dash oh four four seven and it's nineteen dash oh four 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 seven. Just to keep our order straight. Thank you so much.
It's been nagging around for a while, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Yes, City Council Bill nineteen, zero four four seven. Yes, I have it in front of me as two zero, but thank you for making that point. I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah. Is that me?
All right, now let's move on. Any, any, any other comments from members of the committee or questions? It looks like all of the agency reports again are favorable. No one has any departures at this point.
This is Rennie, this is Rennie Lawwell from Planning. I just want to say that we stand by our recommendation to the Planning Commission for approval.
Let me just add, we thank Rennie for her work and then for her patience while we, everybody reviewed this at the community and merchants level. And while I forgot, so I forgot to get it approved. And so, Rennie, thanks for your patience as well as your expertise and dedication with this. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Stephanie Murdock from DHCD, we stand by our report and support as well.
Thank you.
Any attendees who want to testify, just raise their hand.
As again, if you're an attendee who wants to testify on this bill, please raise your hand before we move to vote. All right, not seeing any questions or comments at this point. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the bill favorable.
We need, we need the technical amendment.
So this is another, this is another bill, excuse me, that will need a technical amendment. Is there someone moved that?
I move the amendment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, just for the number of the bill, Councilman Clark. Okay, so I knew the question was, okay, so, all right, so it's moved by Dorsey's or second?
Second by Burnett.
Very second by Burnett. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying. All right, amendments adopted. Okay, so is there a motion to move the bill as amended?
Bill favorable as amended, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Dorsey, second. Was I second by Henry?
Okay. Chairman Bullock.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Aye.
The Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, unanimous, we can go to second reader at the next meeting.
All right, thank you all so much for your work and your patience.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have next, the City Council Bill two zero zero five eight zero ordinance city streets closing a portion of South Boston Street extending from South Haven.
Because it's the same block in the, the past, they started in time for five eighty two.
Oh, yes, yes. So we have two bills and we will hear them at the same time. Thank you, Richard, for keeping us on point. So that's one, we'll read that along with City Council Bill two zero zero five eight two ordinance city streets closing a portion of Boston Street. So the first one is closing a portion of South, of Boston Street extending from South Haven, and then it's just closing a portion of Boston Street. Let's see about our community reports. BDC, Law, Planning, Public Works, Trans Station, see, looks like everything's favorable at this point. And I think that's consistent for both of the bills in front of us, yes. And any commentary from any of our agencies at this point? I see DPW now running, okay, yeah, sure, fine. So any, any additional commentary from any of the agencies?
No, this is Louise Carolina with BDC. We stand by our reports.
Thank you, Louise, good to see you.
Likewise, Councilman.
Okay, if there is, there are no other agencies that want to report, I know that it looks like Caroline Hecker is with us again representing for the app. So you want to speak on this?
Yes, please. Good afternoon, Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg, Martin Greenberg. I represent the owner of the adjacent property to the portion of Boston Street that's being closed to each of these two bills. We submitted written amendments to Mr. Kromrich and legislative reference that correct a couple of typos in the legal descriptions in the bill, both the bills actually. And I'd like to just make sure that those amendments get incorporated so that the legal descriptions will be correct.
Thank you, very much appreciated.
Um, let me say that. What was it? Okay, it looks like everybody here is on, is by the home of Shout this.
All right, so again, not seeing any additional commentary. Is there a motion? And even though we heard both bills consecutive or together, we will vote on them separately.
There's amendments for both bills, Mr. Chair. There's amendments for both bills.
All right, so first we'll have to move the amendment. Is there a motion?
Move the amendments.
Okay, this is amendment five eight. Okay, this is the amendment from 580, for our question, Chair.
I'm sorry.
We're, we're hearing the amendment from 580 now. Okay. Okay. You call a voice, a voice vote on that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Right, so is the amendment for 580, and then for 582?
No.
Then we'll come back, okay. All right, so all, is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
You muted, Councilman. So moved.
All right, moved, moved by Cohen.
Second by Burnett.
Second by Burnett. I saw that you did try to move it, Dorsey, but you, I could read your lips, but you're muted, but I appreciate it. All right.
Some lose some. Okay. Chairman Bullock?
Yes.
Chairman Bullock votes are. Vice Chair Schleifer? Vice Chair Schleifer votes are. Mr. Burnett? Mr. Burnett votes are. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes are. Mr. Dorsey?
Hi, Mr. Chair, may I just make a comment to the Planning Department real quick? I, I looked at their, their bill report. When I clicked on the link for their bill report in Legistar, the tab at the top of my web browser says Otis Rowley III, Director. So there might be some programming or some metadata embedded in the files coming out of the Planning Department or something, or it might be a Legistar, I don't know. It says Otis Rowley III at the top in the tab when I open the document.
Yeah, thank you. I believe that's because it's a very old template, so yeah, we should probably update that.
Yeah, okay.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Henry votes are. Member Snee?
Yes.
Member Snee votes are. Mr. Chair, seven votes and affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second reader at the next meeting, and we can move on to 582 now.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you so much. Okay, so now, is there a motion to move the amendments for 582?
Move the amendment for Bill 582, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Dorsey. It's her second. Okay, second by Cohen. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ready for roll call?
When I make a motion?
Oh, sorry. Is there, is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Moved by Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Cohen. All right.
Chairman Bullock?
Aye.
Chairman Bullock votes are. Vice Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes are. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes are. Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen votes are. Mr. Dorsey?
Mr. Dorsey votes are.
Back to Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Henry?
Yeah.
Mr. Henry. Member Snee?
Yes.
Member Snee votes are. Seven votes and affirmative, no negatives. Mr. Chair, we can go to second reader at the next meeting.
All right, thank you so much.